Yes, thank you for the opportunity that we have to serve our community. God, we ask now that you'd give wisdom, you'd give strength, and you'd give understanding to make the decisions that need to be made here tonight and in the future. And we just pray that you would be free to give us what needs to be done. Bless, please this meeting according to your perfect plan and your perfect will. Thank you for the opportunity, and we ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. And now for our pledge.
These are from Pleasant View Elementary. We have Remington and Tucker Tilly, Naomi Garcia, and Legend Davis Ray. So they're going to help us say the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, students and parents, for being here, and students for leading us in And now for recognition, Mr. Carnes.
So, Mr. Carnes is coming up. This month is our, is it this month or next month? This month?
This month.
Is, uh, Principal's Month.
Yep.
Principal's Recognition Month. And we just wanted to, um, to recognize our principals because they are the lifeblood and the reason that we have such great climates, um, safe and healthy and just supportive climates on our campuses. And, um, we're just lucky to have such a talented group of principals. They're always on call, they're always willing to do whatever's asked for them, and they always make, uh, decisions to the best interest of kids. So we're just very lucky to have our, our group of principals.
Yep. And, uh, yeah, so they bless us every day. I know they bless me. It's, uh, an amazing opportunity to get to work with them, and, uh, we have just an amazing group. I get to work with them, um, at least on a weekly basis, really closer to a daily basis, and, and just the work they do, the efforts they put in, the sacrifices that they make. And so it's, um, we truly want to recognize them every day for everything that they do. But this is a special month for them, and so, um, we wanted to call them up and, uh, have a picture made and, uh, and, uh, so just to, to honor them and everything that they do. So, um, are you guys ready? So, from RB Godly Elementary, Mrs. Jody Dixon. From Legacy Elementary, Amy Hill. From Pleasant View Elementary, Dr. Melissa Block. From our sixth grade campus, Stephanie Nguyen. From middle school, Tom Frazier. And that's all. And from high school, Curtis Flood. Who's... Nikki, do you have a good camera? Okay. Oh, Jeremy's got a good camera. Mine's an iPhone 8. You don't want it.
While we're talking about our principals, I want to commend the collaboration between the principals, um, particularly, um, the out-of-the-box thinking that was demonstrated just this past week with our joint, uh, pep rally. I thought it was absolutely phenomenal, uh, the way the coordination was done, getting the students here, having everybody in place, and then just, just, uh, what an awesome atmosphere it was with all of the kids in the stands out there. So, again, thanks for, uh, the suggestion, again, out-of-the-box thinking of the way of doing things, and then for everybody working together to pull it off. Okay, Dr. Dear, Superintendent reports.
All right, construction updates. Why don't we start with Reader? Let us know what's going on with Fine Arts.
Now, can you hear me? Okay. All right, so, Fine Arts, Godly High School Phase III. Didn't do the before and after this time, just because the significant changes are kind of slowing down on the exterior of the building. But, uh, storm shelter got our waterproofing up, starting to put brick ties up so we can start in on the exterior veneer. Um, this is the south elevation of the school, same thing. Uh, we've got quite a bit of veneer up. I don't know if you can see it just because of the lighting, um, but the exterior's progressing on. And then the north elevation. All right, and then the interior, um, so this is the CL&amp;I. This is looking back towards the, the north parking lot. Uh, we've got, I think, probably 95% of our interior framing up. Probably going to start sheet rock Wednesday or so. Uh, we got all our in-wall inspections today, so that releases us to do sheet rock. Um, this is looking from the, this is looking from the exterior door back in towards the kitchen. Again, most of the ductwork's up, most of our framing's up, um, just about to start sheet rock, and that releases us to do a lot of finishes. And this is looking at the far edge of our building, looking back towards the temporary wall. Um, got some guys finishing ductwork, you can see on the lifts. And then a couple photos I haven't shared. Um, so the photo on the right is the choir hall, and the photo on the left is the art rooms. Both of those are in what we consider Area B. Um, they're far, they're a little bit further behind than the kitchen. Our big push is trying to get the sheet rock up so we can get finishes going in the kitchen so we can start equipment in the kitchen. Uh, kitchens notoriously are, uh, have lots of bugs in them. They take quite a bit of time to get, uh, get all the equipment worked out, get inspections, all that. And another picture, or this is a photo of, uh, the band hall, the storm shelter. Um, we've got all of our underground plumbing in, uh, both sides of the storm shelter, and we're looking to, hopefully, weather permitting, pour, we've got a four-inch concrete deck that goes on top of the storm shelter. Weather permitting, we're looking to pour that Friday. Um, once we pour that, then we'll move into the slab in the storm shelter, and that will release us to start in on interior walls. Uh, most of them are CMU, but then finishes after that. So our big push over the next month, uh, is to get sheet rock up in the kitchen, start finishes, wall tile, um, and then get flooring down, and then start bringing kitchen equipment in. All of our kitchen equipment, uh, I think 90% of it is in hand. It's not in our hands, but it's in our supplier's hand. So that was a big concern of ours, uh, but we've managed to get a hold of just about everything. And that is the brief look ahead for the high school, or for Phase III.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, in the storm shelter slash band hall, uh, the, I'm assuming the walls, the interior walls are going to have some sort of acoustic material on them?
Yes.
Is that something, I mean, I'm, I'm sure that it's already been ordered, and it's gonna, we're not going to see any delays and anything like that?
No, ma'am. Uh, so the interior walls of the storm shelter, all of them are, most of them are CMU, they all get sheet rock. In the band hall itself, you get acoustical wall panels and then acoustical ceilings. Um, the acoustical wall panels, I think, are supposed to arrive in about a month, and the ceilings are already sitting in the supplier's warehouse.
Krista, if you remember the current band hall, we had problems with those falling off, and Huckabee's already addressed those, and we, they've got a fix for that, so we won't have them falling off all the time like they were last time.
Anything else?
Yes, you just finished the, um, the canopy at Legacy?
Yeah, canopy at Legacy is done. Uh, we still got to do lighting and the electrical pathways. Um, we'll be doing that at night and on the weekends. That'll probably take a couple weeks, just because we're doing it at night and on the weekends.
Okay.
Um, and then the football field at Legacy, I think we've got 90% of the sod in, maybe a little bit more. We had a delay in getting the goals in. Um, they were supposed to have been on site, I think, two weeks ago. Um, they didn't get on site until Friday, so they did the foundation for the goals on Friday, and then showed up at the end of the day to do a little bit of work, and I think they'll finish them tomorrow. Um, we've released the landscaper to go and finish the sod. Um, we didn't want to put down fresh, brand-new sod and then have equipment driving right over it.
What about the ramp in the back for access to the...
The ramp is complete, save the handrails.
Handrails?
We put up wood, yeah. We, uh, we needed to wait for the ramp to be poured so we can get the handrails fab to fit. Uh, we put up wood handrails that means you guys can use it, uh, at your will.
Is our date of completion the same?
Yes, ma'am.
Which is?
January 24th.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff? All right, thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. S&amp;P, give us a update on Phase II.
All right, so this is going to be the CTE, or the Wild. Uh, this is looking from the west elevation. Uh, you can see we poured the big portion of the paving out there, as well as the ramp down to the field. Uh, we got the ramp all poured, and we're finishing up all the insulation. This is actually from, uh, almost a week and a half ago, so you'll see, you'll notice that we'll have a lot more of the insulation on the exterior of the building on that west face there. Uh, the roof is wrapped up, which is great, uh, down through that portion. We're making all the final tie-ins to the mechanical. This is looking at the CTE from the east elevation. Uh, you can see we have started putting in glass. That actually doesn't show that because we have several pieces in, uh, as this little bit older picture, but you can see we were closing up all the roofs there, the sloped roofs, the low roofs, as well as finishing up some brick, uh, and doing the fur outs on that south stairs. This is just down, looking up from the paving area. That's showing your home entrance right there, going down to the football field. You can see we only have one portion of the storefront out on the third floor for access, which will be getting closed up here shortly. This is going through the building. You can see we actually brought in some millwork finally, getting it up on the walls. That's, uh, one of the science labs, uh, so it'll go. We got the grid up, so we're getting ready to close that up once we finish with the overhead inspections, uh, which we had last week, and we have another one coming up. Uh, you can see that's the exposed ceiling area with the painted MVPs. This is going over to the arena. Uh, now that we've finished the pre-cast, you can see we closed up that full east side there, uh, and bringing the roof over to follow. Uh, we've connected all the roof drains on that lower portion there, and we're finishing up all the exterior sheeting right there, and we'll move that equipment out and start working on that site. Now, the inside of the arena's changed quite a bit since, I think even y'all seen it last month. You can see we have all the pre-cast set there. Uh, we're bringing the decking over to complete that roofing, and you can see on the north side of that picture, we have some scaffolding for the dance floor. That's letting us get, uh, the access up to the mechanical equipment, um, and that fur down above the, these stands there, as well as that right there's the radius of the special presentation area. Uh, you can see we have all the paving there poured, and we're just completing everything overhead. We've actually started the fireproofing of that roof deck at the end of last week, uh, and working our way through there. This is another look of it. Uh, one thing I wanted to show y'all is we're getting finishes started in that arena as well. You can see we have y'all's Godly Purple there on some of the CMU, and we're working through getting that up as well. Yes?
This kind of goes back, um, because I'm a tennis player, asking about the tennis courts, because the lights you can't get on in the evening. I understood there's supposed to be some kind of a timer put in.
So, right now, the, the lights there, the timer will be completed. We're, we're, all that electrical right there actually gets an enclosure, and so the enclosure, we had, we had to reorder it, came out wrong. This was several months back. We have the new one here, but that means for us, though, is we're going to have to pull that electrical out, set that enclosure, then it all goes back in. The timer switch you're referring to actually gets mounted to the outside of that enclosure. So we're looking at, I think, probably, we're starting that work at, weather permitted. I, I think we're supposed to get quite a bit of rain this week, but...
Oh, yeah.
Uh, start pulling that electrical out this week, get that enclosure set, and get everything back. So, weather permitting, we should have that switch up come the end of next week.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other?
Estimated date of completion, is it the same?
Uh, right now, we actually captured a, uh, peer extension for beginning of the project that we're able to incorporate in the schedule. Our current substantial, estimated substantial completion date right now for the CTE is 1:29, and for the arena, it's 4:09.
So both of them have moved further back?
Yes. And part of that CT is we were having an issue with the, uh, permanent power of the main switchgear, which we actually captured, we have all the parts on site as of last Thursday, and we're taking a look and seeing what we can do to suck some of those back in.
I got a question.
Yes?
Pleasant View, what, what's left to finish up that punch list?
So, I, I don't know a whole lot of the Pleasant View situation. I do know a few. I know, uh, I've been helping coordinate some glass repairs that look like they're going to be completed today, uh, tonight, actually. Uh, it looks like there's a scheduled landscaping meeting at the middle of this week, as well as, I think there's a new panel for the shelter that's supposed to be arriving on Wednesday as well.
I think the AC, there was an issue with AC?
Uh, I would have to go back and check on, on that.
Okay.
Dr. Block, do you have a list? You could...
I do have a little bit of an update on that. Um, so yes, they're still working on finishing the storm shelter. That's the big-ticket item that has to get complete. Um, and then, uh, there is some AV work. They came back in and did a test imbalance, so now they're working the kinks out for their air conditioning. Um, and then, um, the other items that were off the original list was to finish up some AV work. Uh, we, we were waiting on some parts in the gym, and then, um, landscaping, replacement of stuff that was damaged. And then the folding door, like this one for our stage, it's a holdup on the manufacturer, and they've been telling us that, but we told them we were willing to wait for that to get done, the colors that we wanted. Um, it wasn't impacting anything. So those are all the big-ticket items that have not been finished originally, and then there's some punch list stuff that we're going through. The glass, uh, was getting installed as I left the building, um, tonight. Some of those other types of things are getting knocked off, um, daily.
How many items are on this punch list?
I don't know exactly the number of items, but...
Round estimate.
But, um, I'd probably say about 15, 20, but some of it ranges from, like, the little cubbies that we had that the kids could sit in and read. Uh, they pulled a seam apart, so they need to come back in and, and, and close that seam back up. So some of those types of things. Nothing that's impacting us using anything. Um, you know, some chipped paint that was chipped that they need to come back in and touch up. So it's, it's, it's a lot of things like that. Um, there are a couple of faucets that they're waiting on. Um, the little sensors weren't working, so we need those replaced, things like that, uh, done. But we, I have a, I have a list, and they hear from me pretty frequently.
Have they given you any indication of when that, the punch list will be complete, and when the original list will be complete? Because we're looking at being in that building for 10 months now.
Yeah, I know that the storm shelter is something that Huckabee has been closely monitoring. They were there the week we were on fall break. Um, we're supposed to talk about that this week, so I don't know the exact date, but I do know that that one is one that they're, Huckabee is demanding to get done ASAP, um, so that then they can free up people and funds to then complete some of those other type of items. Um, but we do have, uh, Brandon who's there with us daily, so he's trying to knock out the things that he, he can do, um, and he's helping me manage those timelines as well.
Is Brandon going to stick around a little bit to make this happen?
He's been sticking around.
Oh, I thought he was leaving, like, tomorrow or something.
Oh, I don't know. They talked to him...
Not, not that I've heard of.
If, if he leaves, then it'll be somebody else, I'm sure, because they know, yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll be keeping somebody on hand for us, is my understanding.
All right.
I haven't talked to Ryan.
Travis, do you have any idea when they're going to replace those trees? Because it's fall, and pretty soon it's going to be too cold to start replacing trees and the rest of the grass.
So, as far as when we'll be replacing, I'd have to confirm. I know they're having the landscape meeting this Wednesday. Sure that's part of what they're going to review, but I can definitely touch base with them and see what they have on that. Any other questions?
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Travis. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone sign up for public participation? Do I have a motion related to the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
One second.
I have a motion by Terry and a second by Marissa. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Next, we have, uh, consider approving the Godly District Improvement Plan.
Okay, Dr. Callo, is this you? District Improvement Plan? So this is the third reading of the District Improvement Plan, so I think we're about ready to approve. We've been going through and massaging some of the messages and some of the wording.
Yes, good evening. Um, yes, this is our third time through, so I did want to share with you just a few pieces that I pulled out. Um, as you know, we, we do our District Improvement Plan aligned with CBAS, so it looks a little different than you might see in other places, because our goals are our pillars, and our key questions are kind of our drivers. So as we started looking through our, our needs assessment and the things that we really wanted to focus on, um, some things that came to the top were the fact that we weren't consistently seeing students demonstrating that higher-level thinking. We've talked about that a few times, that the rigor, um, isn't there because we feel that teachers are working on that mastery of basic skills, which is important, we want that, but we also want to go a little bit deeper. Um, so why, why are we not able to see that as much? And I think we hear our teachers saying, "Planning time. We need time to dig into the data. We need to, you know, look at our, our content." So that's been a big piece for us. Um, seeing those lessons that are really built upon the unique needs of students, again, time, training, um, having the right resources in place. Again, we've spent a lot of money this year on buying resources because the state did not provide textbooks for us this year. Um, so as we look at, what is our response to that? We know what the problems are, we know what our questions are, so how do we respond to that? Can you go to the next? Oh, hmm, not used to having control. Okay. Um, so the way we respond to that is we want to provide our teachers with that time, support, and opportunity so that they can really dig into the curriculum documents, so that they do have that opportunity to look at how far students have come in the last nine weeks, um, plan their lessons together, collaborate. So, um, we are trying to give our campuses PLC time. At most campuses, they have some time every week to sit down and plan together and talk about data. If not, at least every month. We know we have a design day built in, so that's one of our responses. Um, the other is that monitoring of lesson design, monitoring of what's happening in the classroom by all of our district administrators, by our, you know, CTE and literacy. We want everyone in the classrooms, because that's where all the work is happening. The students and the teachers are doing the, the really hard work, and so we want to be there to watch and see what's happening and to support them. So two of the things, those are the system responses. Those are the things that we've done to respond. Um, and, and some of the strategies that we've put in place, district-wide Fundamental V revisited book study. We've done Fundamental V for several years. This, a couple of years ago, they put a new version out. It really met us where we were, so we've done a district-wide book study there. Again, intentional use of those design days, planning, making very good use of our time with all of our different groups, um, providing support for the campuses to have professional learning communities, and the addition of our early literacy coordinator. That's really helped a lot at our elementary schools, giving them a, a person that's just focused on literacy at elementary. She's had a great impact. And then, of course, increased presence in the classroom, doing instructional rounds, doing those weekly, uh, walkthroughs by all the principals, and, and Mr. Carnes and I are out on campuses every week. Almost every day, we're out on a campus, um, getting in classrooms as much as we can. So that was the, one of our big pieces, was just getting that response to Pillars One, Two, and Three into place so that we could say, yes, we are taking care of the, the learning, the teaching and learning side, which is the most important thing that we do. Um, the second piece was helping students take that ownership. We wanted them to make sure that they are lifelong learners, that they are focused on what they can do to be ready for the next level. Um, so we wanted to put some pieces in place for that as well. You're going to hear quite a bit about that in the campus plans, because a lot of that falls to the campus level, but we are going to support our campuses in implementing, um, clubs and some of the different things they're doing. And then also, um, we spent all of last year developing our character and leadership development curriculum. Ms. Evans worked on that, built it to be exactly what we need it to be, and then the counselors are getting in the classrooms, and they're doing lessons weekly, um, they're meeting with groups. You know, we really shifted our counselors over to be more student-centered and not working on testing and, and meetings and things like that. So that was a big shift that we've made over the last year and a half or so. So that is another system response and another group of strategies that we're working on. And then our last thing that we noticed, um, that we really wanted to focus on was that community awareness. How do we reach the people who don't have kids in school? Um, you know, we did mention before that we felt like it was a lot more seven out of 10, but as we started digging into some of the data, we realized a lot of young families are in Godly, and so probably not quite that high, but we still feel like at least four or five out of every 10 families, they don't have a connection to us, and so we want to reach out and connect with them. So, um, not only connecting to the parents that are in our schools, but the members of our community, the businesses, um, making sure that everyone in our community is supporting our schools is the very best thing for kids. It's important for safety, it's important for our fiscal and operational, and it's important for our community connections, our community awareness. So Pillars Four, Five, and Seven really fall into this area where we want to engage parents, we want to connect to all members, and we want to make sure that people are aware of what we're doing. And so some of the pieces that we have in place for that, of course, Parent Square, that's a big thing that we put in place this year. It's been very successful. Um, Wildcat Talks, which we're doing next week, we have our first one next week, our Long Range Advisory Committee. That group is very diverse. There's a lot of people in that committee that are going to give, um, feedback on what they think is important for our, our district, and so we want to make sure that we have people on that committee that aren't necessarily parents, but they're members of the community. Um, our publication, which hopefully you've all received, one or two or more, um, it's absolutely gorgeous. We were able to brag, um, to other districts in the, the T-PAC, which is our consortium. We got to show it off a little bit a week or so ago. Mr. Carnes and I were feeling pretty proud of ourselves because we got a lot of positive feedback from districts who've been doing this work with us, and, um, they actually took the copies we had, they took them back with them to their, their school districts. Um, our business partnerships that Ms. Nix is really working hard to bring into the school to get internships and, and just lay those, that foundation for our students to go out and work in our community. Um, and then, of course, our education foundation, we're going to relaunch that this year, and I feel like that's going to be huge for us to, to connect with some different organizations. And then our family and community engagement team. If you were out at the Fall Fest this week, this weekend, I'm sure you, um, met Ms. K. Penny and Ms. Ketcherside. They were out handing out volunteer, um, forms. We are making a really big push this year for volunteers. There is a place for everyone in our school. There is a place for everyone in our school district, whether it's reading one hour a month or working at drop-off or pickup or lunches. There is a place for everyone to connect with us in our schools. Obviously, we're going to take our due diligence. We're going to do background checks. We're not going to just let anybody in the doors. But if there are people that want to connect with us, we want to find a way to connect with them and bring them into our district because the only way they're ever going to be able to understand and support us is if they really know what we do and they come and see what's happening on a daily basis. So like I said, our campus, our district plan's a little bit unconventional because it's not just a goal and a strategy. It's really built around those pillars, but I feel like we put a lot of time and energy this year into reflecting on where are our gaps? Where do we need to fill in? And finding just the right strategies to do that. So I bring to you tonight our district improvement plan for your approval. Unless, if you have any questions, I'll happy to answer them. And if not, I ask for your approval tonight for us to move forward with putting this in place.
I have a few questions.
Okay.
I know that you just answered one of them about the volunteers that we're trying to get.
Yes.
Hopefully, that will help our teachers to have support so that we can help our students have higher level of thinking and master those basic skills and also so we can meet those unique needs. However, if we're unable to get those volunteers, is there a plan in place for some additional paras? I'm very glad to see the literacy coordinator for the elementary school. I know that will help there. What are we planning to do for the middle school and high school to have that additional support for teachers?
I definitely know that we've already had a big response for volunteers, so I feel like we're going to get people in. We are putting watchdog dads in at the elementary school, which has pulled in quite a few people already. They're excited about that. As far as hiring additional paraprofessionals, I will tell you, it's very difficult right now to hire. Even, we've had positions that have been posted since before school started, and there have been no applicants. So that is why we are really trying to get creative in how can we get help during lunch, during recess, during drop-off and pickup to free our teachers up during some of those times because that will give them a little bit more time back in their day. Absolutely, if we have a need, we're going to fill it. If we identify an area where we need a personnel unit, we're going to go find that person. I was teasing Ms. Block. She keeps hiring our great substitutes, and then we don't have subs. But, you know, we really do keep our eye out for where those opportunities are. I do think that as we see the literacy foundation at the elementary school come in strong, the middle school and the high school, you know, we shift from teaching kids, or you learn to read and then you read to learn. And so as we get that foundation at the elementary school, that alone helps support the middle school and high school in their literacy assistance. But they've added some response to intervention teachers in the last year or two at the middle school, and we've added some additional teachers and paraprofessionals. They have help hubs here at the high school where they have a spot where kids can go and get support during the day. So the needs look a little different as you get older, but we definitely have pieces in place all along the way to meet those needs as students have them.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
And then I have one more question.
Absolutely.
Because I was not on the board last year, the first time I'm seeing or hearing about the new Character Leadership Development Program is tonight. So I just have a question. When I was reviewing it in the district improvement plan, it says that the District Improvement Committee will approve of that curriculum.
Yes.
Does the board have any oversight of that curriculum?
In state policy, it just is required to go through one committee. And so we did take it to our District Improvement Committee. They've had an opportunity to look it over. Our counselors have had an opportunity to look it over. Typically, the board does not approve any of our internal resources. Now, when we do adopt a textbook, for example, next year, science will be coming in. We will be bringing our science adoption to the board. And I don't think it's an approval. I think it's an aware, like, we let you know what it is, but I don't believe, I'm going to have to look that up for you, but I don't know that it's a voted piece. I believe it's just we bring it to the board as a information item. But we will come to you with our science, as we go through the whole science adoption over the next semester, we'll bring that to you, just let you know where we are, what we're looking at, and how we're progressing. But typically, internal resources, they just have to go through a district committee. And so the site-based committee was the one that we took it to.
Okay, that brings in additional question. Were those district committee meetings posted for the public and was the public allowed to attend because they do have decision-making power in that curriculum that does follow Texas Open Meetings Act? Just want to make sure that we were following that.
Ultimately, those committees are, they're still, they make recommendations to us, the administration, so we've still got, I guess, the decision-making ability in there.
Well, since the board's not able to approve that, it's only approved by that District Improvement Committee, then they do have decision-making power.
It's not approved by the District Improvement Committee. It's the administration that makes the final decision.
They, right, I was going to say, it's a review, not an approval.
Okay, well, maybe.
We didn't adopt it. We wrote it ourselves, so.
Then maybe it just needs to be reworded in the district improvement plan because it says that they approve that.
Okay.
Which then would be a decision-making power of that committee, and that opens you up to Toma.
Okay, I will replace it with review.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
Oh, sorry, one more question.
Okay.
When will parents be able to review that curriculum once it's finalized?
I believe it will all be on the website with the lessons because it's not something we purchased, it's something we built. I believe Ms. Evans has it ready to roll out and put out onto the district website under her Character and Leadership Development as soon as it's finished going through the review process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Can I ask for a approval of the district improvement plan?
I'll make a motion to approve the district improvement plan as presented. Thank you, did a great job, Ermie.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Terry and a second by Krista. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? And opposed? Motion passes with one vote against, but it does pass. Next on the agenda is the second review of the Godly ISD Campus Improvement Plans.
All right, I'm back. So I'm actually not going to do all of the talking. I have asked the principals to identify the one or two big things that they're going to be working on this year. Again, the district improvement plan drives the campus plans, so, you know, we've identified the areas we want to continue to work. We've identified some of our big system responses. And so then they take that opportunity to look at their unique needs on their campus, where they need to respond, and so they're going to bring to you the one or two items that they're going to focus on this year. Again, this is the second review, so this is your opportunity to kind of look at it, ask questions, and then we'll continue to keep working on it and then bring it for final approval for next, at next month's meeting, so.
All right, I'll go first for Pleasant View. So we have our three main goals. Of course, we're going to follow the same academic goals that we have set forth in the district plan in terms of improving the rigor. Some of the things we'll continue to do with that are ARC Math Alignment Design Days. And to answer Ms. Lane, you had mentioned about the reading. We also have reading buddies that helps relieve some of the pressure. Where our older students partner with our younger students, so then the teachers can work with some of those students that need a little more attention. One of our second goals at Pleasant View is to focus more on students getting to have voice and choice. It goes along with pillar 3.2, to promote and value the interest of students. We have not started clubs at Pleasant View. By nature of us not being at our own school last year was one of the reasons. So now that we're there, we are in the process of forming clubs so that students can start that in the spring to get a little taste of it, and then we'll roll it out full speed ahead for next year. And then our third main goal wraps around the career and college readiness and also partnering that with getting the volunteers to come in. It goes along with pillars 2.3 and 4.2. And some of the things we're going to do will be career days, try to Skype in some different careers that students don't have access to on a daily basis. Business partnerships, come to our school and share what it takes to run that particular business, what degrees you have to have to be a part of that, or what you, what job force skills you need to have. And then we're also going to, you know, we talk about our college shirt days, but we really want to promote teacher sharing, maybe previous jobs that they've had, so students know we did other things maybe before we were teachers, and what colleges, universities, or trade centers that they've attended so students can start to make that connection. So that's Pleasant.
All right, I think you'll hear some commonalities between the elementary schools. We also at Legacy will continue working on the goals of one through three of student learning and progress, student readiness, and engage well-rounded students. To go further in depth on engaged, well-rounded students, we are also starting clubs. This is something I did at the fifth and sixth grade campus with enrichment clubs, and the kids love having the voice and choice. We'll do it with grade bands, which is really strategically located in the building, so it makes sense, and they're appropriate age levels to mix and match in the clubs. We'll also be recognizing students' achievements in morning assemblies, whether it's certain reading steps or going above and beyond. We call it Legacy All-Stars, and we recognize that during morning assembly so that students get engaged in clubs but also are commended and praised for the things that they're doing to go above and beyond showing their roars. We also are working on our volunteer capacity at Legacy and really bringing in volunteers, reading buddies within the school, but also bringing in, we have our first reading opportunity with Legacy Reads next Tuesday, where parents have volunteered to take reading sessions with the littles in the afternoon and encouraged to dress up as one of the characters in their books, so to bring a little bit more excitement in. So that's Legacy Goals.
Good evening. So for RB Godly, we are focusing on pillar one, Student Learning and Progress, specifically with small group instruction, again, to address the specific learning needs of our students. That would be across all content areas and in our response to intervention time in our, on our campus. We want to support that and the depth that we're trying to achieve there by bolstering up our PLC time, really making it, really bringing in more data and really digging into the data in a way that we haven't before. So that goes along with pillar three and engage well-rounded students. And that's how we're going to support that small group instruction time on our campus. So those are two of our goals. And our third one, we started clubs last year, so I'm not going to speak on that a whole lot tonight, but our next layer that we're adding is community involvement, and we're doing that by establishing a house system on our campus. And through our house system, we have monthly community service projects that our students complete to get them engaged as community members because we feel like it's important for them to understand that they are also part of the community and they can give back and interact with those around them. And then we are also asking for volunteers to come in and read with our students as well and to work on various projects within the school, so that will be a focus for us, too, and that is pillar four. Thank you.
All right, good evening, Board. I have the pleasure of working with Ms. Stephanie Nguyen, the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade is all together as Godly Middle School. So for our Big Rocks, we're looking at our special populations, specifically looking at ESL Special Education 504, but also our GT Gift and Talented Program to provide extra training for our teachers, to provide the individualized support and meet the needs of each of the students individually. Along with the teacher training, we also are implementing PLC time and have been able to get teachers common planning time, so we're working on meeting with teachers on a regular basis to help improve instruction in the classroom as well. And then kind of along with some of the elementary stuff, student recognition. We have a weekly slideshow that is updated by students for students that is shown during lunch, and we have a daily video that is going out, also created for and by students to help recognize the small victories along the way, more than just a awards assembly at the end of the year.
Hello, good evening. So at the high school, we're working on all the instructional pillars the district is working on. However, our main focus in student learning is to work on open-ended responses. The EOC exams have really transitioned from just multiple choice to a lot of short answer or long answer responses kids have to do. So our English teachers last year adopted what's called the ATC Method of Open-Inded Responses, where they get text evidence and then commentary to add to it. We have trained all the core teachers in ninth and 10th grade in those areas to use the same language, so it's common between English, math, science, and social studies for any of those tests that they're working on, and that's our focus with the state accountability when it comes to star EOC testing. Our other big push is post-secondary readiness. You know, we recognize there are some areas we need to improve, getting kids ready for what happens after graduation. We purchased SchoolLinks last January and used it for a semester and tried to figure it out a little bit. SchoolLinks is a one-stop shop for, that's right, is a one-stop shop for kids to be able to figure out maybe interests that they have in life and then careers that are attached to those interests, and then colleges or universities that offer certificates or degree plans that can allow them to do that, anywhere from a two-year school to a four-year school, whatever the child might find interest in. So we're working on that. Additionally, our counselors have done a lot of work with like our Apply for Pi and really pushing that kids apply for colleges. We started doing monthly post-secondary readiness meetings. There was one that happened in September. We have a few more planned throughout the year where the counselors are giving more information to families and students at a sooner pace. So instead of just junior year, in the spring, we have one planned for sophomores and freshmen of what they need to be doing to get ready to graduate high school and things like that. So that's our biggest push is really in the post-secondary readiness areas and helping kids know what to do after graduation, so.
I have a question for Mr. Frazier. You mentioned the videos recognizing kids. How widely are those distributed? Do we have safety concerns over where those get broadcast? So talk me through some of that, please.
Yes, sir. So those are broadcast during our lunchtime on the screen at lunch just for kids to see. So the media class creates the slideshow on a weekly basis and shares it with myself and Ms. Trussell. We play it on the screen to highlight the weekly achievements and goings-on. So that, the only way they'd have it is if they had their phones out during school, which they're not supposed to.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions about, or discussion about, again, this is just for information this month, but any other questions about the campus improvement plans? Okay, that's all we have today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have the second review and discussion of the PLACE election method for school board trustee election.
This was just left on in case there were any more, any more discussions to be had. Second, second time we've talked about it, so just any other input you guys might have.
I was making sure that Terry wasn't about to speak. I didn't want to step on her toes. As I mentioned in the last board meeting about moving to this method, the city of Waukesha Hachie, again, as I mentioned, they had an incumbent targeting another incumbent, so I just want to make sure that the board is aware that it does make it easier for individuals to target individuals. So that is just something to keep in mind. And then also, if we did go to places, in my opinion, it would make more sense to be geographical or district places because that's typically where you do see those places is if it's a geographical region. For instance, like each elementary zone could have two members, and then there could be one member at large. That would be a way to district and have geographic places. So those are my only comments. Thank you.
I had more of a question. If we do, as a board, decide to implement a PLACE system instead of an at-large system, what, what does that look like? How do we go about doing that? When does it need to be done by?
I would recommend it be done before we call the election, just for, so there's no confusion with our public. It would just be you guys deciding to do it, and then we would just, you guys would draw numbers. You'd still, you'd still be in the same cycle, so the same three would be up this, this year, and the same two would be up the year after that. But we could get, I mean, we'd reach out to our lawyers for guidance, but I don't think it's very complicated.
Have we reached out to other districts that have maybe recently gone through changing from at-large to?
Haven't found, haven't found any that have recently done it, but everyone I've reached out to, if they're our size or bigger, they're in places. The only ones I've found at least close to us that aren't are Ria Vista, Grandview, and Keene, which are much smaller than us.
Those were the three that I knew that didn't also.
I'll make a motion to make the necessary changes to policy and procedures to move forward with considering the PLACES.
I have a motion by Terry and a second by Dennis. Is there any further discussion? I guess I have a question that is probably very open-ended. Are there other data points we want to gather before voting on this at this point? The geographic point that Ms. Lane brought up, is that something that we...
I think that's a more expensive avenue, and I think those are in really large districts like Fort Worth, Dallas, Houston. I talked to a board member in Burleson, actually a couple of them, that they go by places, and he said he liked that. I mean, there wasn't any... he didn't vocalize any negatives to it.
One of the big drawbacks to geographic places is if we just go to regular places, everybody, every voter still gets to vote on every place. If you go to geographic places, then you only get to vote for your one. And to your point, it would be tough to assign them to certain, like, elementary zones because as fast as we're growing and we're adding elementaries, we'd be changing that quite a bit.
Okay. I have a motion by Terry, second by Dennis. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? And opposed? The motion passes. Next agenda item is to consider revision to the Godley ISD Board Meeting Regulation.
So, this was brought up just to help ensure, you know, our board meetings are safe, secure, and orderly. Our district... for district stakeholders, we wanted to just put out some expectations and standards, actually put them out there in writing, so it's to try to increase transparency. BE Legal states that a board may adopt reasonable rules to maintain a safe and orderly meeting environment. And like I said, the focus of this is to increase transparency, to educate our public about meeting protocols. So, this is just a first look at some things we could do.
I didn't see a document for this item, and I had emailed requesting it. I never received that, so I'm not really sure what these... this policy change is.
Do you have your board books open?
Yeah. Friday night, I could not see it, and I had emailed asking for it, and I never had a response. I didn't know it was ever added, so I didn't have an opportunity to see it.
Yeah, it's on there now. I'm not sure when it was added. Did we send out a communication?
I think I got an email notification. It was updated today.
Those of you who have seen it, do you have any... We're not acting on it today. It's just information. Well, you guys can... if there's no questions, you guys can kind of take a look at it, and we can bring them back for more discussion next time unless we've got any questions.
No questions at this time. I do want to have a little more time to digest the wording of it.
Yes.
I need more time to digest into it as well.
Absolutely. Yes? Okay?
All right. Next agenda item, consider amending the District of Innovation regarding nicotine e-cigarettes.
Okay. Mr. Carnes?
All right. And this is a second review discussion, so not asking for any action on this tonight, but just bringing this back. A couple weren't at the special meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, so wanted to bring this back now with intention, hopefully to bring it back in November for action. So, nothing about this has changed. The amendment, as a reminder, our... what we are asking is that through our District of Innovation that we can make an amendment to allow flexibility when determining a DAEP placement for a student who has been caught with or that's using, selling a nicotine vape. And so, we submitted an action sheet to you on Friday when these were given to you. We did make a few tweaks today, so I have an updated copy of this. Thank you, Ms. Hill. Okay, you took my copy. So, just as a reminder, we do, on the proposed amendment, it is noted that Godley ISD wholly supports efforts to fight the rising use of e-cigarettes and vapes. However, we believe the district can more effectively combat these habits through proactive educational techniques and disciplinary options other than a mandatory DAEP placement. The district believes students possessing e-cigarettes containing nicotine would be best supported by providing additional wellness education and remaining on the campus with appropriate consequences. And the district, again, as a reminder, is not requesting exempt provisions which require mandatory removal to DAP for possession controlled substances such as marijuana and THC. So, we have... we are aware of other districts that have added this to their District of Innovation plans, and then under... so, at the bottom there, under discussion, I did list a few that we know of. We were in the Metroplex over fall break for a couple of days, and there was... Lidle ISD did a really good presentation and discussed their District of Innovation plan and how they were moving forward with this, and there was a room full of people and a lot of nodding of heads, and so I anticipate that there's going to be more districts that add this to their District of Innovation plan. Also, interestingly, so the principals and some of the directors and myself, we looked at other mandatory DAP placements, and I've provided that list there for you. And so, there's some pretty serious infractions or things listed there that are things that we mandatorily send students to DAP for. So, weapons, assault, terroristic threat, there's about 18 different things there, and now they've added 19, possessing or using a nicotine vape. It is our opinion that this one just does not fit with the others and the seriousness of those offenses. And so, that's why we're asking for this flexibility in just determining what is appropriate on a case-by-case basis, considering things that are listed there, self-defense under Chapter 37, which this falls under, self-defense intent or lack of intent, disciplinary history, disability, foster care, or homelessness. And then, on the last page there, we... the principals and I worked through possible consequences. So, elementary consequences would start off with ISS or TAP, so in-school suspension. And I had mentioned that we would have a counseling piece of this, and that's an online counseling. One of the concerns was is that sometimes on the online counseling, there can be some compliance in or just click, 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 and get through it, and maybe they're not getting what we want them to get or the education that we intend for them to receive on the dangers of this. And so, in addition to the online counseling, we've added an element of face-to-face so that with the campus counselor that they would have an opportunity to have some personal discussion around these things. And so, you'll see that that's included, no matter if it's their first offense, second offense, third offense. So, for our elementary students, then, if in-school suspension and we have a second offense, which hopefully we wouldn't, then we would move to out-of-school suspension. And then, should then at that point, then the recommendation would be a DAP hearing and potential DAP placement. Then there's an asterisk. It's depending on the individual circumstances. So, there could be a DAP hearing for the first offense. Well, and before I go into that, you'll see the secondary consequences listed there. So, for our secondary students, sixth grade and up, first offense, three days of ISS, online and face-to-face counseling, but you'll note there that there's also a possible DAP hearing. Second offense would be 30 days. Third offense would be 60 days. Now, the hearing for DAP determines the length of placement. These are just kind of guidelines for us to go by. So, depending on the individual circumstances, there could be a DAP placement for the first offense. So, for example, if a student is selling them like candy and distributing them to numerous kids, well, having someone that's dealing these on campus could be... could be an offense that could warrant a possible DAP placement on the first offense. So, this is where we just want some flexibility. We have instances where things are much more minor, and so with that, this would allow us that flexibility to determine what would be the most appropriate consequence for this. So, we did a... Also...
I have two questions real quick since I don't want you to move on. Why did we start with 30 days instead of 15 on the second offense? What was your thought process behind that? And then, why is there not a parent conference at the secondary level like there was at the elementary levels?
Well, and yeah, and so, we added that in there, and you know what? I might have just forgot to continue putting that on there. So, the parent conference...
I think that's a really key element is the parent conference. That's why I wanted to...
Yeah. So, and anytime there's any of these things, there's communication, there's a parent conference... I mean, there is a parent meeting if it's a first offense, second offense, third offense. I mean, we're having communication with our families regardless. That's... we felt like it was inferred, but we didn't want to leave that hanging out there. We wanted to be more explicit, so yes, the parent conference is a piece of it. Now, with regard to your question about... because it was 15 days for first offense, so second offense, the second offense, 30 days is the consideration there because it is second offense rather than first offense with it being... you've had... now you've had an opportunity. You've had your consequence, you've had your counseling, your family's involved or your guardian, and so then, that's where we went to the 30 days as opposed to the 15 for the first time that they would have to go to DAEP. Yep. Did you have something to add? Okay? So, it was interesting as well, and so, we did a plus delta on reasons to... can y'all see that okay?
Can you come around to the front?
And so, I just... we just thought it was interesting to look at. And so, for our purposes, for the principals, and I was going to say just as a reminder that this passed through the District Improvement Committee by a vote of 27 to 1, and then we have unanimous support from our principals and assistant principals to add this to our DOI. So, as we looked to it, we wanted to determine... and y'all know that that's something that we discuss and talk about a lot, what is the benefit? And so, there are some things on both sides, but reasons to add it, we found more reasons there, and yeah, and so, I won't read all of them. But as we went through the process, had this discussion in determining our why, what are the benefit, we saw that there were definitely more benefits to... and reasons to add this to our DOI.
Do you know what the opinion of the one person on the committee was that voted against it?
The one? No, ma'am.
They didn't voice why they were not wanting to change?
No, ma'am. The vote was done online, and so, it was just a yes or no.
And no follow-up has been done with that one person?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And those are all staff members?
No, that's made up of... there's a lot of staff members, and so, the majority of those are teachers, but there are parents and community members on that committee as well.
Sorry, so many committees. I forget how they're made up.
Right. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
But I believe it's... I think it's two-thirds of that committee has to be made up of teachers.
I have a comment. As I mentioned at the last special meeting on October 6th regarding this, vapes are such a big issue right now that the state did feel the need to make a law regarding this. Also, we currently don't have doors on our restrooms at the high school. We're having an issue with our vape sensors going off quite a lot. I did appreciate that on the secondary school level, the first offense, you did add the possible DAEP hearing like we had suggested. However, at the elementary level for the first offense, I don't see that as an option, and I believe that it should be regarding the huge issue with these vapes. And like I mentioned at that last meeting, in my opinion, why they are more dangerous than tobacco cigarettes is because we don't know what's in them. They are so easy for students to get, and they could be getting a THC vape thinking it's nicotine. They could be getting fentanyl. I mean, it's a huge risk, and so, I don't believe that now's the time to back down on the disciplinary action regarding vapes because students need to understand the seriousness of this. It could be a decision they could not take back. If there was fentanyl in there, it could be death. So, like I mentioned, I don't think it's time to go soft on this, and so, I would be open to this, adding this to the department... excuse me, our District of Innovation plan if we had the possible DAEP at the elementary level as well so that students and parents understand that this could be a disciplinary action, something as serious as DAEP, but I don't see it there. Thank you.
The asterisk under elementary consequences lists, depending on individual circumstances, possible DAP hearing.
I think still just listing it at the first offense because, like I said, it didn't really catch my eye, and it is at the secondary level. I think that would be helpful.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What at... mainly, it would be Frazier and Flood. What is currently... what do we do for the first offense? What is the punishment? Before the law?
Before the law? We did three days of TAP last year, and then the second offense was 30.
Of TAP or DAEP?
No, 30 of DAEP.
So, essentially, it was what we are talking about implementing?
It was essentially what this plan is recommending. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Same for...
We did the drug counseling on them. We are looking to doing that counseling a little more in person instead of just online this year because the kids sometimes kind of click through it. So, we want to have somebody they can actually talk to because most of the kids, you know, the APs deal with, they're like, "Look, I'm trying. I don't want to do this. I'm kind of stuck and addicted now." And so, they... sometimes they need people to talk to because they've got other issues going on in life that they need to unpack and figure out what's the root cause of why you're seeking this relief.
Right.
And so, you know, they have a lot of... some kids have a lot of trauma in life that they need some adult that's really trained that can help them with that, and that's what our counselors are here for, and Ms. Evans, you know, coming and meeting with them and doing those things.
So, I have another question. How often would you say that somebody gets caught with a vape here at the high school?
It's hard to judge. I mean, this year...
I mean, just say this year. Say since August.
This year, we've caught 10 this year.
What's that?
Roughly 10 this year that we've caught this year. A couple that we caught recently this past week from homecoming activities, but that's, you know, in the nine weeks about that number. So, we know it's around, you know, I'm not pretending it's not around. That's just the ones that we have caught at this point, so.
Those students that have been caught have... they have gone to... they have followed what the Texas law asked us to do, and that was to go to DAEP, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Unless there was some kind of special need or disability that pertained to something else, yes, ma'am. So, we still follow like our protocols if they were special ed or something like that. But general ed students, yeah, they've gone to DAP so far.
And I just want to make sure... so, this, our list that you've given us today, that's basically what it used to be before. So, we have not increased anything we were doing in the past if we go to change this provision.
I have a question to the elementary campuses.
I'm sorry. I had one more question for them. You said that you've caught 10. I don't know... I believe it was the high school campus that we heard at the October 6th meeting that there was a morning where the vape sensors went off around 60 times. So, if we're only catching 10, what are we doing to catch those students? I mean, that's a lot of times, 60 in one morning, and we've only caught 10 the whole year.
Yeah. Part of the problem with the vapes that are different than nicotine, tobacco, and stuff that we've seen in the past is they are easily concealed. They can put them in places that we will not go, and they're designed that way by the manufacturers. You know, they are very... they don't burn you or anything like that, whereas a tobacco cigarette would. Kids are able to hide it and find it, you know, put it places we're not going to go. And so, it's just... we are a part of Johnson County Crime Stoppers now. Patty Maggard is heading that up. I'm actually joining their Board of Directors to work on that, that all the schools are facing around here, where we're part of Crime Stoppers. We're putting out there so kids can get rewards if they turn people in and things like that, and they're trying to beef that up. But it is truly an epidemic that's going across all the schools in the country, and it's one of those things that, you know, we're... And it's one of those things that, you know, we're trying to educate kids and restore kids as much as we can from, from the choices they're making as, as the punishment works sometimes, but not all the time. Especially if it's a, a severe punishment that lasts, you know, thirty days is six weeks of school. So they're involved in any activities for six weeks, those activities are gone. I think you look at national studies like the NFL when players got caught with drugs and things like that and they banned them from the organization forever, they didn't see positive results because now they were just left to their own will. So they brought them where you can't play, but you're back with the organization so they can give you resources and training to try to help you. Some of the people that care most about those children are on this campus with our teachers and our coaches and our extracurriculars. And so that's one of the reasons we want to push to the three days is we have a chance to work with them and to drive them that we care about you and we love you. Don't pick this. Why are you choosing this? Stick with us and we will help you. Whereas when they go to DAP, they lose all those resources for thirty days or sixty days. And, and we agree that it needs to be necessary on the second offense. Like if you've messed up the, the first time, then okay, you've got to go because you've got to learn that you can't do that. We're also trying to teach our other kids to, y'all got to stand up and tell us. You know, we, we're not going to go in the bathroom. I've seen schools that have locked doors and shut down bathrooms. And then kids who are doing it right and following the rules, they now can't find a bathroom. They hold it because they don't want to be late to class and urinary tract infections happen. That's not a good solution either for our kids. So we don't want to punish all the good kids that aren't doing it by locking doors. So we need some of our kids to learn to find their voice and step up and tell us. Who are the ones that are doing it and passing it around? Because those sixty-eight times was probably going on is there's one in there and they're passing it. And they're all, and so it's hitting every time. Okay, well tell us who that is. Let us get the one that's doing it and we'll get them to DAP real fast, those that are distributing, those that are passing it out, those that are sharing it. But you know, those that are falling into peer pressure, we want to try to educate them and help them. So that's kind of, yeah, it's, it's a big deal on those vape sensors and that's why they're there. You know, but we need, we need kids to step up and tell us what's going on. So I hope that answers that, that kind of went on.
Yeah, and like you mentioned, this is the same disciplinary plan that we had last year and we're still seeing a problem. So not making it more strict seems really not like a good idea in my opinion. And like I said, I would be open to this district of innovation and plan and, and putting this in there if on the first offense at the elementary level, there was that possible D A E P hearing.
But there is.
There is.
The possible D A E P hearing is listed.
Do you, do you see what I'm talking about? It's not listed at the first offense at the elementary like it is at the secondary.
But it's possible across the board. It's listed as a possible D A E P hearing at the elementary and at the secondary campuses. Regardless.
I can list it next to-
Yeah, I just think that it looks different.
But yes, it is, and it was intended to be that DAP is possible for a first offense, so.
I have one additional question or suggestion that may already be happening.
Yes ma'am.
When we have the ten that we've had so far and we know that they've had their first offense, do we have our APs or our counselors, somebody trying to follow up and just, to your point Flood, being able to come to them and say, hey, you staying away from it? I mean, you know, just some kind of positive reinforcement after the fact when we know that they are caught? Without trying to catch them again? I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, one of the, you know, our, our APs, they know who these kids are and they sit and talk with them. And a lot of that is, is just counseling and time spent with them of what's going on and trying to help them know that there's another way to do this. You know, kids, when they get caught by themselves alone in those moments, we all gave into peer pressure. We know what that's like. And, and they face so much of it and there's so much negative talk through their phone and other things that they feel they have to do this and they feel they have to hear it. It's really difficult nowadays more than it ever was when I was a kid just because of how much information kids have and what they think they need to do. But yeah, our APs are constantly in their ears, talking with them, building them up, saying good morning when they come in, trying to find them, checking on their grades, you know, checking on all the aspects of life. So, and the counselors too. And our two new counselors, really proud of them. They're working their tails off trying to meet with these kids and build them up and, and help them talk about where do you want to be and what do you want to do? This isn't going to get you there. Stick with us, go to school, do your work, be here, don't be absent, you know, things like that. And it'll get to where you want to go. So yes ma'am, we'll do that.
Good deal.
Let me go back to elementary. Do you guys see this on your campuses? And my concern is that mommy and daddy do this at home and a fourth grader's going to put one in their backpack and you're going to throw the book at them. That's a little unfair in my opinion. And it's more of an educational at your level. But do you see issues at your campuses?
I have had instances at our campus and exactly what you said. A lot of it does come from seeing older siblings and other adults in the home and they're mimicking that curiosity, peer pressure. One of the things I do want to emphasize, I know Mr. Carnes already said it, but this, when you look at our consequences, these are recommendations just like for anything else that we give a recommendation for any action a student needs a consequence for. But they ebb and flow back to that list based on things that have happened before or circumstances that were listed and things that we can and can't do because of homeless or the different list that he shared in here with you. So just because it says first offense for that particular item doesn't mean we don't take into consideration things that a child has done before or situations that they're in. And so in instances where we had multiple students who were involved, each one of them was considered separately. And I think that's what I most appreciate about this plan is that I get to do that under this. I get to look at the child. I get to consider why they did it. I get to consider how did they get their hands on it? Who was the one that made that choice? And I can then make the best decision on what we feel like is going to be the biggest impact. I have two personal children. I wouldn't handle either one of them the same exact way. One way's going to handle one and one way's going to handle the other. One would be destroyed by these consequences, absolutely destroyed. The other one probably would need it. I mean, I could, and those that know my kid would know which one it is. But I think that's why this is so important and why we're so passionate about this is because we don't want our hands tied. You're exactly right. These kids need to know how serious this is. None of us are taking this lightly. We are fighting for them day in and day out. And that's why we're fighting for this is because we're fighting for them and what each kid needs on their own. It's my soapbox, sorry.
Very good job.
Melissa, well said.
Can I ask another question? I'm sorry.
No, thanks.
It's an important topic.
Yes ma'am.
So I'm really glad Marissa asked her question about what it, what our, what our consequences were prior to the state passing the new law. So it doesn't sit very well with me that we are basically going back to, to the wording that we had prior to. And so what I'm going to ask, and I'm putting you guys on the spot and feel free to say, I need time. What, off the top of your head or from discussions that you guys have had, what could be something that would be an increase from what we used to do but not throwing a first offense in the A E P if it wasn't warranted? So where is there a, a middle there? Yes, secondary level, sorry.
So it was discussed, you know, three days of in-school suspension is what we have in the past. You know, we could increase whatever. The state also came out and said three days of any sort of suspension is the max that you can do. So, you know, that we had some consequences in our handbook that were five days of TAP that we had to reduce to three days to meet new state legislature as well. So that's part of the reason that we kept it that way. But I also do believe that there are other, you know, we have lunched attention. We have all sorts of, you know, homeroom, hey, you need to come sit in the counselor's office in homeroom or whatever it is, set up pep rallies. I mean, you just asked for off the top of your head. That's, that's kind of what I'm doing here. But yes, I do believe there are other things that we can get creative to say this is serious and we are taking it seriously. But at the same time, we are trying to educate you on the dangers and keep you away from potentially harming yourself.
Yeah, we're just really limited on what discipline options are at our disposal for the most part. Like you said, the three days is the max now that we can do for that. You know, part of the harm with DAP that we see as well is it removes the family. When you're at a DAP placement, you can't attend any godly I S D functions period until you're done with your placement. So if you have a sibling that's participating in events, you don't get to go. You don't get to go be with your family. Now parents might have to figure out what do I do with you and where do I put you? And so it, it's just such a separating instance that removes you from everything that I don't know that it, I, I have very rarely seen kids that go to D A E P that come back that it's like had the effect that you behave now. They say, okay, if you want me to be D A E P, I'll be D A E P. I'll show you what it means to be D A E P. And the vast majority of our kids go to DAP, they return to D A E P within a few weeks because they start living up to that expectation they think we have of them. And so I, I think most of it really rests in trying to break through to the child that this is not going to give you whatever you think it's going to provide. There are other things that will. You know, from what we're trying to sell you, what we're trying to show you, what it means to be a productive adult and how to stay away from this stuff. You know, that's, that's really what I hope we can send the message. I do think there's some education things we can do for adults. I know Mr. Hunt, I think he's doing some of that on fentanyl awareness that he's bringing a presentation hopefully that six through twelve, probably parents can come and listen to so they understand the dangers. I think some of it might be trying to break through to parents a little bit of understanding the real dangers of this for your child that they need to stay away from and trying to educate on that side to maybe get more proactive on it instead of reacting when the kids have it around here. So, but it's just, it's just tough because these are really the two options we have from the state for the most part. You know, we can start writing citations through Officer Quinteros. We've talked about that in the past, but the judge says no to the first one. He throws them out or she throws them out, says let the school handle that. I don't want to deal with those in my courtroom. So even if we write it, they're not going to prosecute it. So they'll prosecute the second one, they won't prosecute the first one generally unless it was a felony charge on a THC. So that's kind of where we got stuck.
As you mentioned with the D A E P removing them from extracurricular, extracurricular activities, however, for some students, that may be the only thing that gets through to them because they live for those extracurricular activities. So that is a positive in this consequence that, you know, you might not be able to go to homecoming.
Sure. And, and that could be one thing, you know, they could not go to DAP, but we could remove them from extracurriculars, you know, for a three-week window. You know, we could talk about those things and take those things off the table from them. You know, we talked about, I know Dr. Dear mentioned this morning, parking for the high school kids. We could take their car away from them, you know, and not let them drive to campus anymore, things like that. So there's some creative things we can explore and try to figure out. So we, we look into those things, yep.
And when we say removed from extracurriculars, we mean, we're really meaning competitions. There, we still want them involved with their support system because if, if you tell a kid, hey, you're still going to practice for three weeks, but you're not going to play, that's not very appealing because they're still practicing. And we were talking about maybe some of the code of conduct of all of our organizations could have an additional, not penalty, not consequence in whatever they're in. Because we do want all of our kids, and a lot of our kids are very active. Maybe they can't compete in robotics or, you know, they, they don't get to fly drone for, you know, a couple of weeks or whatever. But we can, we definitely want to make it painful.
Could we add the possibility of losing extracurricular activities to this list?
It's definitely something we could add, absolutely, yep.
Okay, some good feedback. Any other questions for Mr. Carnes? All right, we'll take this back and we'll, we'll bring it back with some more of this feedback.
Pretty quick, November like thirteenth or whatever it is. We'll be back soon. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on it, all of you.
Time is seven twenty-five. The board will recess to close session. We'll convene in closed session under the Texas Government Code Section 551 dot zero seven six, considering deployment specific occasions for or implementing of security personnel or devices.
Thank you all, appreciate it. Yep. Except for Mr. Hunt. Way in the back.
All right, we reconvene, open session at seven thirty-five PM. And do I have a motion to consider?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda item as discussed and closed.
I'll second.
We are adjourned, seven thirty-seven.